...in order, if we could stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming tonight. We do not have any visitors signed in wishing to speak. We do have some board and committee reports. Ms. Goldhoff, we can start with you.
Thank you. I was very fortunate to serve as our voting delegate at the annual NISBA conference in New York City, which took place on October 25th through 27th. During this conference, an annual business meeting is held to gather the voting delegates to adopt official positions, which lay the foundation for the association's advocacy agenda and priorities. We voted on these positions a couple of meetings ago. And NISBA represents 700 school district boards of education. And at our meeting, we had 240 or just a little under delegates that were present to vote. And these positions we voted on will lead the governmental relations staff in NISBA. Our board voted to support the positions of the resolution committee. And there were 20 resolutions this year. But of those 20 resolutions, 19 of the resolutions were adopted and only one was not adopted. And many of the statements and resolutions focus on safety and the social and emotional well-being of students and staff. That was a good portion of the conference. But the remainder of the conference consists of many workshops and lectures that are designed to help us deepen understanding on a huge variety of topics. What I decided to attend were some educational sessions on budgets and state aid, family partnerships within the schools, and delegate orientation, as well as a four-hour pre-convention workshop on communication within schools. And the headlining presenter for this pre-convention workshop was Dr. Janet Robinson, who was the superintendent of schools in Newtown when the Sandy Hook tragedy took place. So that was a very impactful workshop that I attended. The other very interesting lecture that I attended was a question and answer period with the New York State Commissioner of Education, Marielle and Elia. I found her very frank and concise. It was an excellent, wonderful conference to attend. And she was able to lead the discussion and said her main focuses continue to be assessments, fixing what was implemented too fast and what doesn't work. And the next generation standards I completed and teacher teams are developing assessments going forward. She's focused on APPR, considering that the moratorium ends on June 19th. And she has some plans to gather information from building principals, teachers, focus groups, and public hearings. So she's very on top of that. She's also very focused on mental and social wellness and health. It's obviously an important concentration for this and future years. And it's a significant element of ESSA, which is another one of her main focuses, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And she spoke very deeply about that. And finally, she encourages all school superintendents to identify and notify her office of issues and concerns. The last thing I wanted to mention, obviously, I had a lot to say about this convention that I attended. It was three days of a lot of information. It was wonderful to attend. But they did share with us a link to all the workshops and the conference materials. And I am going to share that out with Ms. Custodio when she comes back. And I will have that available to forward to my fellow board members. Does anybody have any questions? I sped through that, but there was a lot of information I wanted to cover.
Great, well, thank you for attending for us.
My pleasure, thank you.
We do have a policy committee update?
Yeah, we had a meeting. We met on October 17th. Normally, we would meet again the end of January. But because there were enough policies to review, we scheduled another meeting for December 4th. So that's coming up pretty soon. Objective, basically just review any new and revised policies. It was pretty straightforward. We spent some time on the policy, sexual harassment in the workplace. It wasn't a new policy, but there were enough revisions that it took a little bit of time. And one policy review that was ready for board approval, Policy 7222, diploma and credentials for students with disabilities. I guess BOCES has since sent another revision and will review that on December 4th. And that's pretty much, it was a pretty concise, straightforward meeting.
Great. And Mrs. Goldhoff, we have a transportation committee.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. The three of us, you know, talk about the same things. The transportation committee just met yesterday morning. And after quite a long hiatus of not meeting, we're getting the band back together and focused on revisiting some of the things we looked at several years ago to see if there's any opportunities to save money when it comes to transportation. But our primary project that we're going to be looking at, coming up very quickly, is looking at the First Student GPS Bus App. We did a pilot program of it a couple of years ago, and it did not go very well. But they've made some significant improvements, according to First Student, in the app and in the ability to use the app and functionality and things like that. So we're going to be meeting with First Student to discuss another pilot so that we can make sure that it's serving the function we want it to. And then we'll be making a recommendation whether or not we want to use that for the district.
Great. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Strickland.
Thanks. We're honored here to welcome our Students and Teachers of the Month from September and October. So Mr. Pidgen has some of his pathfinders here to help us do that. Welcome.
Thank you very, very much. It's always an exciting opportunity to shine a spotlight on the wonderful and great students who we have at Amherst Central High School, as well as our wonderful staff. I have a couple of my wonderful, got a theme for me here, wonderful. Wonderful pathfinders with me. They'll introduce themselves and start with our presentation.
Hi, I'm Alexis Bradley, and I'm one of the pathfinders. And one of the students I got was Sean Murphy. And Sean Murphy was chosen as Student of the Month by Mr. Rob Close, Mr. Jason Beckman, and Mr. Justin Pomelars. Mr. Close states that Sean defines leadership and effort on the football team. He is an excellent role model for the juniors and sophomores on our team. It is an honor to coach Sean, and he will be a difficult player and, more importantly, person to replace. Mr. Close imagines that Sean brings the same qualities and positive attitude to the classroom. He feels that it is a true pleasure to know Sean. Mr. Beckman states that Sean consistently displays the highest level of respect for his teammates and coaches. He is intelligent, punctual, well-prepared, and leads by example with his work ethic. Sean brings a great deal of enthusiasm to the Amherst Tigers football team. He is quick to encourage his teammates and to also hold them accountable. He is a determined, coachable, motivated young man, a great role model for others to follow. Mr. Pomelars states that Sean not only excels on the Amherst athletic field, but he is a stellar musician and natural leader. A member of Concert Corral and Operetta, Sean is also serving as co-director of Varsity Singers with friend and colleague Matthew B. Cullen. He encourages the younger members with poise and professionalism, maintains a positive attitude, and has earned the respect of his peers. Sean Murphy will be representing Amherst in the NISBA Area All-State Wind Ensemble, playing trombone, and at the NISBA Conference All-State Festival at the Eastman School of Music in Rochester, New York, as a member of the mixed chorus. Ms. Ward states that she has been impressed with Sean's engagement and hard work in AP Government this year. He's willing to ask bigger questions that relate our class topics to what's going on in the country today, and appreciates his honest assessment of his own performance in class. As a senior, he takes a mature approach of admitting what he needs to work harder to master, and then he goes about it and does it. No excuses. Congratulations, Sean, for being chosen as one of September's Students of the Month. So then, I also have Amelia Schaefer was nominated as a Student of the Month by Mr. Justin Pomelars and Ms. Christy Gauzle. Mr. Pomelars states Amelia has been a member of Operetta and the Concert Corral since she began high school. A true leader, Amelia comes to class every day with a positive attitude, always ready and willing to give her very best at each rehearsal. She demonstrates a sense of learning for learning's sake and models professionalism with and for her peers. Ms. Gauzle states that Amelia has been such a joy to work with. She is one of the top students to walk the halls of Amherst because of her generally caring and hard-working nature. Amelia is an ideal leader. She is the perfect combination of curiosity and capacity to absorb learning. She loves being a part of Amherst Music's program, and she is a student, athlete, and leader in our clubs. She has great relationships with both her peers and teachers, and has extended her ability to form meaningful relationships into the college arena while she interns with a local professor to further her chemistry knowledge. Amelia is the best. Congratulations, Amelia, for being chosen as one of September's Student of the Month.
I'm Paige, and for October, I have Matthew Gramsa was chosen as Student of the Month by the Pathfinders. Matthew is an exemplary citizen of Amherst High School. He is a fine student and works very hard. He's respectful of his classmates and the faculty. And he is an ambassador for the school through his participation in volleyball and basketball. Matthew was also chosen for our prestigious Athlete of the Week. Matt led the Tigers in their victory over rival Wilmington East, 25 to 17, 24 to 60, or 26, 19 to 25, 25 to 20, 15 to 9. Matt contributed 10 kills, 14 digs, and four aces. Matt stood out as a leader through both his performance and communication to his teammates and kept them attentive to their opponent and game plan. Congratulations, Matt, for being chosen as October's Student of the Month. And then Emily Starkweather was nominated as Student of the Month by the Pathfinders. Mr. David Mansell says Emily is an outstanding student that constantly performs at a high level in his regents' chemistry class. Her perpetual smile brands the room each day, and her positive attitude and high energy level help make the class enjoyable for everyone. Emily is a very conscientious student and can often be found coming in early before school to ask questions or to make up work if she misses class for any reason. Emily is both humble and kind to her classmates, and is truly a joy to have in class. Mr. Pomelars states that Emily has been a member of Amherst Concert Corral and Operetta for the past three years, and has been involved in dance at Mullins Sisters for many years. A compassionate, positive, and enthusiastic student, Emily is always willing to lend a hand and be there to support a friend, help teach choreography during Operetta rehearsals, or just listen when you need an ear. She is an upstanding citizen and always maintains a positive attitude with faculty and peers alike. On a personal note, Emily is my family's babysitter. I have enough respect for her personally, and I hope that I must trust her in my home looking after my daughter, Lily. Congratulations, Emily, for being chosen as October's Student of the Month.
I'm going to take care of our staff. I'm going to go out of order. I'm going to start with October. Ms. Christina Evans was nominated in October. She was nominated as Teacher of the Month by the Pathfinders. Mr. John Heim states that Ms. Evans is a true asset to the high school, student body, and the CTE department. Christina works tirelessly to give our students opportunities to gain communication, teamwork, leadership, and problem-solving skills throughout the year, both within her classroom and outside the classroom. Ms. Evans works tirelessly to bridge partnerships with our outside professionals, who in turn bring their experience, wisdom, and sage advice to our students, focusing on our career and financial management course in 10th grade. She's brought in doctors, nurses, engineers, paramedics, sports commentators, a professional hockey player, project managers, environmentalists, architects, professors, accountants, finance specialists, human resource managers, and a whole cadre of other professionals to speak to our students about their careers. She will generally stop by Mr. Heim's room and introduce him to the guest speaker of that day and period. One comment he has consistently heard is how surprised the speaker is about the thoughtful natures of our students' questions. He believes it's a true testament of Ms. Evans' passion for what she does, and it's her contagious enthusiasm for our students. In addition to these classroom speakers, Ms. Evans has organized the following events: our Toastmasters International Public Speaking Trainer for Amherst Academy students, our STEAM Career Expo for the entire school, that was even a rocket scientist at this year's event, multiple junior achievement stock market challenge competitions team, and helps cosponsor the Amherst Student Federal Credit Union that is open in our school every Friday. Ms. Evans also stays in constant communication with our Amherst Academy Advisory Board with representations, companies that include Delaware North, Northrop Grumman, Northmire Capital, UB, Damon College, National Grid, Amherst Federal Credit Union, McDermott Financial Group, Exadvisers, Kelton Enterprises, L3 Incorporated, and the Marriott Hotels. Ms. Evans is an educator that's on the move and never stops moving. Her dedication and professionalism and commitment to our students is truly deserving of this award. Congratulations, Ms. Evans. Mr. Duke McGuire, Teacher of the Month for September. Mr. Duke McGuire was nominated as Teacher of the Month by pretty much the entire Amherst Central School District. But we have an excerpt of what Katie Rapp read about him at our homecoming assembly. "Duke graduated from Amherst in 1970 and has worked at the high school for 32 years. With great pride, he has watched his own beautiful daughters graduate from Amherst, but also become teachers at Smallwood and Windermere. One day, I'm sure his new grandson, his namesake Duke McGuire, will also walk these halls, Duke DeMarco, I should say, will walk these halls. Many of your students know Duke is the man who works in the attendance office, cheers on the sports team, and gives fist bumps in the hallway. We teachers know that Duke always has our backs, and we appreciate his daily reminder on the in-afternoon PA announcements, be nice to each other." What some people may not know is that Duke McGuire is the greatest athlete to ever walk the halls of Amherst. People may not know this because Duke is the most humble and gracious person I've ever met. He is not one to call attention to himself, but we're going to do it anyways. Duke's personal history as a player and a coach is too vast to cover here today. But some of the highlights include being drafted by Major League Baseball. Upon graduating from Amherst High School, he went on to play at Cornell University instead, and was drafted two more times in the years to come. After playing in the minor leagues with the Detroit Tigers and getting injured, he transitioned to coaching and then broadcasting, where he continues to share his love for the game. He was inducted into Buffalo's Baseball Hall of Fame in 2010 for his work as a sportscaster with the Buffalo Bisons. His number 13 was retired by the Amherst Tigers baseball team in 2015. Every year at graduation, at actually our award ceremony, a heartfelt speech is given by Duke. He gives out the Time Taylor Award. This award remembers and honors his friend and teammate Tom and highlights the achievements of students, athletes, who aren't always necessarily the stars. Giving this award embodies Duke's character. Duke builds people up. He is kind and generous with his time. He makes you feel like you are the best and most important person in the room. Congratulations, Duke McGuire, on being chosen as September Teacher of the Month, and as well as an illustrious career at Amherst. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. One thing that always stands out to me when we have these presentations is how well-rounded our students are. When you hear that there are accolades on the playing fields, on our stages, in our music rooms, in our classrooms academically, it's very impressive how well-rounded all of you are and how committed you are to your growth as a whole person and not just in one arena. So congratulations on that. We know that that's not possible without very supportive family members and parents, which I see many of here. So congratulations to all our parents that are here and grandparents to support our students. You must be very proud of the young men and women that you're raising. Congratulations. And to our Teachers of the Month. It's nice to showcase what we see every day in our classrooms in the high school. We're very proud of you, and we appreciate everything you do. So thank you very much. Very nice job.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bazinski is actually serving as our district clerk tonight, but she'll put on her hat as our business official. For the next portion of the superintendent's report, she's here to share with you the update to our fund balance and reserves long-term plan.
So, thank you. Believe it or not, this is our first step in budget development for the 1920 school year. So you'll notice that our reserve plan is in draft mode or pending because this is our opportunity to review our reserves, the purpose for them, our current levels, what our funding goals are, whether we're increasing or transferring. We can have those discussions, make sure we're on the same page. And then this will be on the agenda November 20th for year adoption. And then this guides us through our process and decisions in budget development and helps us with decisions for year-end, when we have a better idea of where we land at the end of the school year. We have five reserves in total, four of which currently have funds available in them. Our Reserve for Retirement Contribution, this is a reserve that we're able to budget from to support our revenue budget, to then support our expenditure budget in the area of New York State employee retirement payments. So currently, we have a recommended funding level of two years' worth of retirement payments. And at our current rates with our salaries, that's just over $1.5 million. Our balance as of June 30th of 18 was $1.2 million. So our recommended increase would be just a little more than $300,000 for that reserve. Our EBLR Reserve, our Employee Benefits Accrued Liability, is a reserve that we have in place to cover our compensated absences. So compensated absences are all of the benefits that employees are entitled to when they leave, whether it's retirement or resignation from the district. So that's a liability that we are required to calculate annually, and it's reported in our external audit. So it's verified by our auditors. The recommended level for funding of this reserve is 100% of your liability, so that would change annually. Our liability that we have reported and calculated is $2.4 million. And our current balance in this reserve is almost $1.5 million. So then that would leave a recommended increase of almost $1 million in this reserve. Our Unemployment Insurance Reserve, again, can be used to support our budget for unemployment claims. We do not have an insurance policy for unemployment insurance. We pay actual claims. So we do budget for those estimated costs annually. And we would have the ability to budget from this reserve into our revenues annually if we felt that we needed to do that. The recommended funding level for this reserve is 10 years' worth of unemployment billings. So we looked back at the past 10 years and aggregated those costs, and it was just under $300,000. And we actually have about $450,000 in this reserve. So if the board wanted to, there would be room to transfer some of this money out into another reserve if the board desired and felt that it would be more appropriate. Legally, the board has the authority to do that. We do not need to go to the voters to make those transfers. It would simply be a resolution from the board and a transfer into another existing reserve. Our Tax Cert Reserve is our funds that we have set aside to cover any liabilities that we have for commercial or private properties who are challenging their assessments, who may have overpaid their tax bill if their assessments on their properties are reduced. There are very strict rules for the funds in this reserve, and we calculate our liability annually. And we renew those calculations every year and make sure that it's accurate to any open claims that we have outstanding. So currently, the liability that we had this past September 30th when we calculated was just over $900,000. And our reserve is just over $500,000. So we have used a little bit of this in this current year. We appropriated about $60,000 out of this reserve. Moreover, any refunds that we're required to pay, we can close to this reserve, even if we hadn't appropriated for it in our budget. This just allows us to have a truer picture of our revenues because we know it's going to close to that reserve. So if this was fully funded at the current liability that we calculated in September, we would need another $400,000 in this reserve. Our capital reserve is used strictly to offset the local share of future capital projects. This is authorized by the voters, and this reserve was created in 2017 for a maximum lifespan of 10 years and a maximum funding level of $500,000. We currently do not have any funds in this reserve. We've established it, but we haven't started funding it yet. And the recommended increase would be to fund it to its full limit eventually. So in addition to our five reserves, we also monitor unassigned fund balances, our assigned fund balance, and our debt service fund. So our unassigned fund balance are the funds we have remaining that are subject to the 4% rule. So it's 4% of the next year's budget is the maximum that you're supposed to have. The goal is to be between 3.5% and 4%, so we always want to be as close to 4% as possible. This past June, we ended our year with just over $2 million in our unappropriated fund balance, which was 3.7%. Assuming we have a 3% increase in next year's budget, then our recommended level for year-end next year would be $2.4 million. But those are just estimates. We haven't started those calculations yet. Assigned fund balance is funds that you have set aside for a specific purpose and use to lower your tax levy for the future year. So typically, this is money that we assign from our unappropriated fund balance to close our gap or to balance our budget for the next year. And it also includes any carryover purchase orders or encumbrances from the current year into the following year. So an example of a carryover purchase order would be an order that was placed in May or June, but perhaps the supplies haven't been received yet, or contracted for a service and the service hasn't been completed yet. We're not going to pay for that until we receive the materials or the service has been completed. But we want to make sure that those expenditures are tied back to the proper school year. So we leave that PO open, and then we carry it forward into the next year. This year, our carryover encumbrances and our assigned appropriated fund balance was just over $1 million. And of that million, $92,000 was due to encumbrances, so we do anticipate spending that money in the current year. And then finally, we have our debt service reserve, or I'm sorry, our debt service fund. And this debt service fund houses any outstanding premiums that we've received from bonds or bands and any unspent bond premiums. And those monies must be used to pay down debt and interest payments or future-year payments for debt and bands. So that money stays segregated from general fund. It sits in the debt service fund. This year, we ended the year with $250,000. And then we've used that to pay debt already this year. So we do anticipate having that a zero-dollar fund in future years. But we will keep that open. We are in the middle of a project. We will have more borrowing happening in the next couple of years. And it's a great place to put any proceeds or unspent dollars so that it stays clean, it stays segregated. It's very transparent to our community. And then we're using those dollars for exactly what their intended purposes are. And there's no misunderstandings or questions about where those borrowed dollars ended. So in total, we have about $6.9 million in overall fund balance. That includes reserves, assigned fund balance, and unappropriated fund balance. And 3.7 of that is in our four reserves that are funded. Our goal is to have a total fund balance of almost $8 million. So that's something that we'll work on in the next couple of years to get us back up there. Are there any questions or comments, thoughts?
We have to make a decision on that $150,000.
We don't need to make a decision on it until the end of the school year, in June. This is just kind of a... This is just kind of a plan on where we think we would want to go with that and what the recommendations would be. Once we have a better idea of where we're going to end, we'll have those discussions in the June meetings, and then after we finish our audit, then we'll have the final determination of what funds we have available to place into reserves and where we want those to go. Then we'll update our plan again next year. So if there aren't any other changes or questions, then we'll put this in, we'll take the pending off, and then this will be presented to you on November 20th for approval, and then it'll be on our district website as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for tonight on the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mrs. Bazinski.
Okay. We will need a motion for new business items.
Make a motion for new business items, 1, A through S, and 2, A through D.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through S, and 2, A through D, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries, 7-0. Mrs. Bazinski, we don't want any follow-up action.
No, Mrs. McLaughlin is going to send the link for the NISPA workshop materials to Mrs. Custodie, and then we'll be able to share those out with everybody.
Great, thank you. We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session in matters regarding collective bargaining negotiations and employment of a particular person.
We have a second for that. Mr. Smith? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.